It is 6:00 PM and we're calling this workshop session of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a forum. First up on the agenda is discussion of the agenda items and consent agenda. Give everybody a second to pull that up. Item one, we are not going to be taking action on this. Yeah, that's the public hearing.
Just to clarify for the rest of the council, we had to adopt this tonight, but because we have Councilmember Patrick Kelly and Rodney Cade out, it can't be adopted tonight because with the emergency clause you have to read it three times. So we're going to have to restructure this deal as a 380 agreement right back in the new year.
Okay. So does that remove the other couple of items as well?
Yeah, we'll get to this in a sec.
Okay, alright.
Item two. Any comments or questions?
This one will have to be read three times.
Item three.
Item two has to be read three times? Maybe it works. So we can't go through those.
Because we don't have the emergency clause.
The other option would be to table it for the next meeting and then it would, if everybody's here and everybody votes in the affirmative, it would pass that night.
That would probably be the ideal. That way you could get it passed faster.
Yeah. You have a preference?
I would prefer that you table it to next town.
So we're going to table that one. We have to do no action on the other one because it's going to be a different deal brought back.
Mayor, that would be tabled to January 9th.
Thank you.
On number two.
Consent agenda. Item three. Item seven, we're going to poll. I'm going to need somebody to poll that one so that we can take no action on it. And item 11 is the third of the three that we need to take no action on. We do have closed session tonight. If there are no other comments on the agenda, we'll go ahead and move on to item B.
Mayor, council, we're going to give you another update on the public safety complex. So with that, we're going to start with the budget discussion and kind of where we are, and Chris Squater will start us off, and then we will transition to construction updates from.
So the schedule, we have started construction on-site, as many of you may know. Relocation of police and fire off-site begins next month. Council consideration of the final GMP amendment will be in March. That's the last bid package that we have. As you may remember, we've had several bid packages. I'll go into the details on that. And construction completion is still scheduled for quarter three of 2024. And relocating back into that building quarter four of 2024. So that's when we'll be fully operational. Any questions on the schedule? Okay. Strategic plan for this project, we've been over before. So we have a prediction of escalation that we had gone over a few times, and we're bidding this in stages. The numbers you're going to see are without the owner contingency put into the contract. So when we bring you a guaranteed maximum price, these numbers have, are the contractors' contracts without our contingency added to that number. So it was quite a while ago, we said that we had $5 million bid out for temporary facilities. They bid under budget, they're committed. Parking and support, which is roughly 40% of our budget, I'm pleased to report, bid under the budget that we had for it, including our escalation reserves. And we'll be bringing you a guaranteed maximum price at the first meeting of next year. So that's roughly half of our budget has been, we've shed the risk on that escalation. And then on the 20th of March, we're going to review where we are. This is our last bid package, and as you can see, it's quite a significant amount of our total project. We are cautiously optimistic that the trends are right where we're predicting they should be, but in the event that we have money left over, this is the meeting at which we will make decisions about whether or not to accept the scope alternates that with a little bit of luck will fall out of our contingency reserves. And what are those alternates? As a reminder, we have a second emergency generator that we'd like to buy if we can. We've got the wiring and foundations for that in the base bid. You may remember, there's a wrap around the parking structure that has some aesthetic appeal, and there are some canopies on top of the parking structure, and then the icing on that cake is solar panels on top of those canopies. So there's other alternates in there, premium ceilings, and some other operational and quality enhancements, but the top line here are the first four priorities, and we'll go into those in more detail in March. So that's the update. This is the current approved budget that you have approved. This is our prediction. At our last meeting, we approved the Woodlock Sofit option, which was $500,000. The bank purchase is $1,750,000 plus $50,000 for relocation. So if these numbers hold true, then this is the funding we've been discussing for quite some time. So there's really no changes to the budget since we were last here.
And just to clarify, when he said things were bid under budget, it means under what he was predicting it to come in, that 15, it doesn't mean that we're not coming in at a cost overage of that 15.
Right. In other words, these predictions have been holding for a few months now, and the only difference between me standing here now and standing here a few months ago was, we have now shed the risk for 50% of our project to hard bids, hard quotes. Before that, they were forecasts. And so we hope that first quarter of next year, we'll have happy news and we'll buy some alternates together.
So this 124,4, that includes alternates or not?
That remains to be seen. So in other words, we've predicted 53 million hard costs, and if the bids come in at 51 million, then we will come to this group with a recommendation for which alternates to buy. So the budget versus actuals will determine whether or not we have, we're not going to change the budget. The budget is the budget. For example, we came in about $600,000 under on that $42 million bid package. So, you know, if that were the final bid package, we would come to you and say, with this $600,000, we'd like to buy that emergency generator. We're keeping our powder dry until we bid that last package.
Got it. So, and just to clarify, we have an agenda item on the consent agenda for number 10. Do these numbers include that, that's in addition to?
Those items, the supplemental appropriations, those you're talking about?
There was a, yes.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. On the PPD, yeah, for the PPD, that is already built into the budget, so that money's already there. And that is intended for, so that's expanding Chris Squater's contract, his company's contract, because all that Chris was doing was pre-construction and not having boots on the ground. With Thrive, with our basement project with Fleet, we've always had a third party that does boots on the ground to be an extension of staff. And so that's what that is.
But we anticipated that, and that's in this number already?
Yes. In other words, it's not in this number, is another way to say that.
It's not, so it's in addition to that?
No, it's, it's, it's in the, it's in this number.
Thank you. That was my understanding.
Yeah.
That's why I looked shocked when you said no.
No, it's, it's.
Okay. And with regard to the additional dollars, we have many ways that we can, we have fund balance that we can use for this, but obviously there, we're going to be strategic about how to, where to pull the funds from. So we don't have a recommendation today of how we're going to do that, but we will, by the time those numbers come in firm, have, be able to cover that cost.
Okay. And just, not to say that this is where I'm going with it, but just as a question, if we do end up getting bids coming in lower, and we decide instead of adding in alternates, we just want to take that savings and just keep the savings, we can do that.
Yep.
Absolutely. The alternates are operational and long-term enhancements, but they're not required to have a fully operational facility.
So they truly are alternates?
So yes, it would be a true decision at this table about whether to buy it or not.
Okay.
Other questions?
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, now we have our construction update.
Okay. You want to do that, Stephen?
Yep.
Okay. I'll block, I'll, I'll block the screen for everybody.
Yep.
So maybe I'll just put it over here.
Where's that, another one here?
So, update on construction today. Familiar image that we've seen. Just explaining a little bit about what the bid packages are. Bid package 1A, 1B, and 2A are all in relationship to the temporary fire station site, which is out at McGee Lane, on 1200 McGee Lane. And so it's a modular building for the living quarters and a fabric structure for the apparatus bay. And there's the fabric as it's going up, it's not yet caught on the structure, that's part of Phase 1A, the apparatus bay. And they're separately phased because it's bought essentially as a manufacturer item and then installed on the site. Another shot of that, a little bit further along in the direction of the fabric, and it's further along than this tonight. And then the Phase 1B is the modular structures. And so it's just trailers that are, come together on the site and are put side by side and zipped up together. And then on the interiors, they're getting close to completing that. The Vista, who was the manufacturer, is more or less done with their part of the project. So this was from some of the punch that we did of that facility, seeing that everything's there, that's supposed to be there from their side. And then our general contractor has some work that they're still finishing up in there to get ready for the live-in for the fire station. And then the Phase 2A is all the stuff that the general contractor for the overall project is doing to tie it all together, which includes the site work, the foundations, utilities, and certain things inside of the structures that the manufacturers didn't make up for us. Just a few photographs of that. There's some paving that's going on on-site, formed up. There's also this dirt pile that we're in discussion with the church, if they want us to leave that there as a burn, that kind of shields us from vision from their side of things. And we put some grass on it if that's the case. If they don't want it, then we'll need to haul it off. And then this is a bit of what is on this board, but it won't stay up the whole time, so the board's here for reference if we need it later. Information boards that we've been putting, posting in various facilities so people know what's coming up and where they can park and when they can park in various places. So the Phase 2B is the preliminary site work, which is taking place to get ready for the big red area that you see here in the middle of the garage. That's the neighborhood four, the size of the site work, that's where the parking garage is going to go. So all of this temporary work is to get ready for that, to maximize the parking on the site and get the utilities out of the way so it's already relocated, because that serves existing facilities to remain, so that they'll be ready to start that construction once it's approved in January.
I want to interrupt Stephen here and just give his firm, and especially him personally, a shout-out for these boards. He's updating these boards every week, and he's doing them in incredibly fast turnaround time. And it has the most current period up here, and then down here, it has what's coming. And these are being distributed to all of the departments to put on tripods in the entries to their areas. And it allows people to see what's going on now and what's it going to look like in a month from now. And it's fairly complicated, but if you take a look at these, if you were a staff member or a member of the public coming to the library, this is really informative stuff. But the main reason I interrupted him is, he's extremely humble, and I don't share that gene with him, I guess. And he's doing a fantastic job with these, as is the contractor, just getting these out, getting them laminated, and delivering them every week and changing them out. So Stephen, I'd just like to give you a shout-out for that.
Thank you. Changing the boards will never, there's going to be a major phase accomplished, that something's going to look significantly different on the site. So one of those is that this parking lot here in the red is currently under construction, the green, and that's going to be opening up probably after Christmas. They've got some asphalt paving and striping to do, but that's the first of several lots that are going to open up. And you can see around the site, there's other ones, I'll go through some photographs. This is just north of the library, and so that's an extension on the south end of the Herring parking lot. And so that's, will give us some more spaces and better connection between that lot to serve as overflow parking for the library. We will take away all the parking where the parking garage is going to go. And this is a new staff lot, north of Herring. So primarily staff will park here, will free up the spaces on the south side for the public. And this is from some utility work. Oh, no, this is the front corner, looking at the municipal MX. So we're adding parking up there too, where the circle used to be. We're putting, maximizing the parking up in that front corner as well. And then utility work that's been going on, you can see the trench that happened through the middle. We need to get that sanitary line out of the way, new construction, so that we would have continuous sanitary service for all the other buildings that are staying on-site. There's also a fire lane that's going on through, south of the Denton County site, and that fire lane will be kind of developed into the construction site, but it will be gated and available all the time to be open if there was a need for the fire department to get through that way. And then Phase 3 is our temporary police station and fire administration facility, and it's also well underway. This is the front corner of it, there on Lakeway, with what the signage, very close to what the signage, final signage will look like.
So, Steve got naughty now? No, that's not his fur.
So it's got, it's a little bit further along than this now, but you know, it's getting all the framing put up for the walls. There's a lot of offices that go in there, and they're actually squeezing into tighter space here than they have today, living with that because it was a strong desire of the public safety departments to spend as little as possible on this facility and put it into permanent facilities. Another corridor that we're looking down, getting deep rock, this is towards the fire administration side, they're going to move first. So in phasing, we'll get them out of the fire building first, so we can demolish that first. Police is going to follow as their side gets completed. This is on their, on the police side. So that's our construction update.
And Mayor, Council, the only thing else I wanted to mention, can't hold that up again, is that we do have a date for our groundbreaking. We will send out invites, but it's January 20th from 9:30 to 11:00 AM. That actually happens to be the day that Tim Kettle passed away. So a good homage for him and his memory. So we'll send out invitations to that. Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you want them to deliver the roundabout by fabric your house?
Nah, just maybe a couple of plants out of it. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Next up, we have Mr. Craig Valentine, the Executive Director of Denko 911, to present a report of outages.
Steve. Steve. Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's an honor to be here tonight. It's the first time I've had the privilege of coming over and talking to you as a council. I've been here for several staff meetings. Denko's had a long history, a long partnership with the city of Louisville. We were created 35 years ago. And we were asked as part of our presentation to give you a little bit of a background for how Denko came into being and what the different structures of 911 entities in the state of Texas are. The 69th legislature back in 1987 created the legislation that allowed for 911 districts to be formed, and that resulted in a structure of three different types of entities. Any public agency that was already offering 911 service prior to September 1st of 1987 could continue to do so. Those were mostly municipalities, and they continue, could continue to operate as a municipal emergency communications district. And that date was established for any group of entities that wanted to come together and create a district to operate 911 services. That required a vote of the citizens in that area that would be covered by the district, and that is how Denko was formed. Let's get back to it, too. In 1987, in August, the vote was held in the area, that is the Denko area 911 district, and passed, which created our agency. To cover the areas of the state that were not one of those two entities, the State Commission on Emergency Communications was created to cover the rest of the state for 911 services. So the rest of the state, not those that were in the municipal emergency communications district or created by the voters as a special communications district, were covered under the regional planning commissions or in our area entities like the North Central Texas Councils of the Governments. So the mission of the Denko area 911 district, as created by our board as a part of the strategic planning process, was defined by the board as to provide a highly advanced and efficient enhanced 911 emergency telecommunications system as a primary emergency access for citizens and visitors to the district to quickly obtain emergency services needed to protect life, health, and property. Obviously, that's our requirement under state statutes. That's what we were created by the voters of this district to do, and that is the mission as defined in the strategic planning process. The funding that allows Denko to operate comes from one of three general sources. There's a landline 911 service fee. That fee amount is set by the Denko board every year as a part of the budget process. So when we go in and they adopt a draft budget, they set the landline service fee for the following year as a part of that budget. The second fee is a wireless 911 fee that is a flat rate across the state of Texas that is collected at 50 cents from all wireless telephone service subscribers. It's remitted by the wireless carriers to the state of Texas and then reapportioned to special districts based on their percentage of population. Then the final area of revenue for us is miscellaneous, which includes some contracts. So we have a contract with Denton County where we do rural addressing or assign addresses for the unincorporated parts of the county that are consistent with the 911 addressing scheme. Some grants, over the past few years, we've been very fortunate to receive some grant funding that has allowed us to move forward some technology projects. And we have a very robust training program. Now, all of the training that's provided to entities in our district is provided to the municipalities and emergency communication centers at no additional cost to you. You don't pay for that training. But when we have someone from outside of the district come in and attend those courses, we have a nominal fee that we charge so that the taxpayers in our district aren't subsidizing other areas outside of the district. It's just, it's a small fee, but that does generate about $30,000 to $40,000 of revenue each year. These are the emergency communication centers that operate within our district, all operated by municipalities, the county, or the two universities. The first seven are what we call primary emergency communication centers, meaning that they answer 911 calls directly from the public when a 911 call is placed. The two universities are secondary 911 centers, which means that calls to the universities are transferred to them by a primary emergency communication center. So there's no citizen who dials 911 and goes directly to one of the universities, they're only transferred there, usually by the Denton Police Department, since both of those campuses are primarily in the city of Denton. We were asked to come here tonight and share some information with you about our technical services. You know, we have many departments, well, not many, we have four departments within Denko, and provide a variety of services, but what you're primarily interested in tonight is technical services and one of our recent projects. As you may know, I've been with the Denko area 911 district for about 10 years, but the last three is executive director. Prior to me, Mr. Mark Payne, who's here, served as the agency's executive director, and in late 2019, he left the agency to pursue a vocation in the ministry. He stayed local, so we were able to contract with Mark as our contracted chief technology officer to oversee some of our higher-level technical projects. What that allowed us to do was to not fill a deputy executive director position, so we created a technical services supervisor and then provided with Mr. Payne to provide some leadership to the high-level technical projects, and that also gave us some advantage to access this history with the agency. I mentioned 911 service starting in the district in 1990, actually August 8th, 1990. I just wanted to, as an anecdote, mention, on that day, I remember that, I was the communications manager for the city of Louisville, city of Louisville employee, and was there when the very first 911 call was taken. That, I guess, tells my age a little bit, and I'd rather not necessarily go into that, but we do, I do have a long history here, and we're very committed to this system. So Mark, as our contracted chief technology officer, is going to go over our most recent technology project and talk about some of the things that you've invited us here to talk about.
Great. Thank you, Barry.
You bet.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight and enjoy. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight and answer questions, provide you some information, hopefully you'll find it useful. As Greg indicated, we have a statutory obligation to provide the interconnection between the calling party and the public as they dial 911, to interconnect that call with the appropriate 911 answering point. You may be familiar, if you've been around a while, the Public Safety Answering Point, PSAP, is what historically the statute referred to as a call center. Our job is to get the caller through the various communication systems to the appropriate PSAP. Now we're calling them ECCs, the industry's kind of made a name change there, so you'll see the ECC reference, Emergency Communication Center. Our core competencies with respect to the statutory requirements are, as you would expect, the technology piece. So we provide the interconnection between all the communication providers that operate, whether they are wireless carriers, landline carriers, voice-over-energ protocol carriers. We provide the interface to them to the 911 network, which is a private network, most of which is managed by enterprise class providers such as Verizon, because they are the major provider in our footprint. It uses local wire centers, local wire in the ground, as you will, Frontier is now our wire carrier in the ground, but all the pieces that are necessary are, equipment, software networks, these are the components that are necessary to do the interconnection. There's database components, there's geographic information systems for locating the caller and mapping the caller, but it's all part and parcel with these components here. Necessarily, in this stage, is the cybersecurity component, which is part of what we do as well. We use both internal knowledge, external resources, and then every two years, we're doing external PIN testing, as I look to Chris, because I know what that is, penetration tests, as well as internal security audits. So we routinely check ourselves against, well, the black hat hackers who they're all, they spend their full time trying to break into networks. So we utilize tools in that area as well. I'll move quickly then to the ECC backups facilities, which, again, Emergency Communication Center. Denco built and constructed this Denco annex. Most of you are probably familiar with it, maybe, I hope, some of you have been able to tour it. It's across from our office. It is an EF5, I'm going to go out of order here, it's an EF5 tornado structure, meaning it's rated to 250 mile an hour winds as well as 250 mile an hour uplift. So it's built to take a beating from Mother Nature. But the purpose there, of course, is to offer a place for agencies to take up operations if they have to evacuate the facility, or there's an event that might even require you to expand your capabilities of call taking. Any one of these positions, there's 12 in this center, 12 of these positions can be configured to support multiple agencies, but when your dispatchers, your telecommunicators show up and log in, everything they have access to in their center today, they have access to here, providing they're not a disruption in, let's say, the administrative lines that connect your phone system to the 911 call-taking equipment. But if that's in place, it will work, so it will be as if they're sitting in their own space. Radio dispatch, that's a recent addition. We know for this to be a really useful facility or center for any agency taking up residency for whatever period of time, they'd be able to do full dispatch. So they can bring laptops in with that, you can have your CAD computer to dispatch running on there, so you can have CAD. Records management is an option, too, with respect to you bringing it in-house, so we give you 911 functionality, our core responsibility. This is a value add, because we know for this to be helpful, you really need to be able to do the second item. So we've got to set up to be able to take up residency long-term there if needed. And then a second, so there's 12 positions here, then the second here, we have eight additional positions in our training center. It's not a hardened facility, but it does allow for spillover. So if that facility's intact in a major event, storm especially, that would expand further our capabilities to support all the agencies here in the district. To give you a really quick summary on 911, how hard could it be? It's a really bad thing to say, I think in the technology industry, it's always harder than it looks. When a 911 call's placed, the PSTN, the Public Switch Telephone Network, or the wireless provider moves that call to these points of interconnect, there's two in the area, those calls are aggregated to these centers, each of the carriers' providers are going to provide a connection to both Richardson and Irving, so we've got diversity going in there. Entrada is the database and routing component for 911. These are contracted services by Denco. We have from there, so coming out of the Entrada circuit, you have two connections going to Richardson and two to Irving, that then go to one each Miami, Florida, and Inglewood, Colorado, where their selective routers are. The selective routing piece is really where the 911 thinking brains, technology really starts to kick in. This is where a decision's made based on where the caller's located, which agency needs to receive that call. So they get there, it moves through their lease circuits back to, if you will, back to our geography, back into our area, where our 911 controllers, we'll call them hosts, operate. And this is the point where Denco begins to have some greater visibility and control over what happens in the network. So at this point, we can see what's coming in, we are able to make changes here at this point, and I'll touch on in a slide coming up in a minute, how we can even effect some change here. But this, once it gets here, it's on the 911 equipment that we help maintain and support with managed services contracts as well to back us up. And then we have three existing networks over which the traffic can flow. So this gets, this is kind of where the rubber meets the road, you know? Go back 25 years ago, there was a wire line network, and that was it. In 2004, we decided it was unreliable from evidence of how unreliable it was, so we proceeded to put in a microwave network. Discover the county had a radio interoperability need post-September 11, so we went in as a joint project, so now we had, the wire line was in place, we went to fixed, fixed wavelength pathways, so as a failover, and then, I'll just jump on ahead and finish this call, this call flow, and then it gets routed to the appropriate center. So to step back one, this last, second to last box is where this is, gets into what these events were about to a large extent. In the process of, well, 2019, we began the project of the software-defined wide-area network. It's the current best, industry best practice technology to aggregate multiple layers of connectivity. So the idea is that this, this technology, this SDWAN, allows you to use multiple types of connectivity, and it all looked like a single network to the 911 system. So it doesn't know that it has wire line, and it has microwave, and it has managed, managed private network. And then this is a piece that's getting overlaid also now, so we've got also this third route of traffic flow. If this fails, this is the low latency, this is the fastest path, next fastest path, and this would be the last option. Just as an aside, spoke with Chris briefly coming in, there's a discussion now about using existing fiber between cities annex and this facility that would provide yet a fourth way to provide the connectivity. So this SDWAN is providing better, better traffic management. We don't have to rely on less intelligent software systems or even human decision, decide which network's the right network. SDWAN makes that decision for us. That is a contracted service. Verizon is the one that was selected to do this because they managed this part for us. So it's an overlay that goes over all of this to tie all this together, and as it's, the second bolt says, the most stable route is selected. So at any given moment, on any given day, even right now, there could be instability in the network. The idea is that it's never seen, it's never experienced by the end user. The number of things in life that break every day that we never know about happens across our whole, our whole lived experience. Well, it's the same with the 911 network. There's always little things happening because it's a network of networks, part of which is managed by us, part of it's managed by Verizon. So there's things happening in the network, and if everything's working, nobody ever sees it. So the point is to minimize network disruptions, which brings us to then, we had disruptions, so let's talk about that. This July 15, we're going almost six months now, this was the fruit of the migration to SDWAN, as sometimes migrations can be painful, this one was. And you've had these, you've probably read them, I'm not going to completely go over them point by point, but the root cause was the vendor representative and network engineer entered a duplicate address, and then networking, that's bad. When two, when two devices have the same address, the same name on the network isn't working, a lot of things don't work. There's confusion in the network, problems started coming up. So it took a while for Verizon, in this case, to figure out what had happened. Part of their issue was, they didn't have the change control processes in place that they said they did. So when they, when they come into this problem that we've submitted to them, they're not sure where to start looking, because they weren't following their own best practice. So that, that first event was essentially rollout-related SDWAN migration work that went sideways. So that's what we had going on here. We've talked to them, they've admitted they need to be doing the change management, they updated some, they didn't have the most current design documents on file, so they didn't even have a really good picture of what the network looked like at that time. And then apparently, they also admitted they need a little bit more training in the SDWAN area for the tier-two guys. So, so at this point, we also learned, there was communication issues, so often we'll hear it was a 911 outage. We would say, no, it wasn't, because 911 was still operational. It was, calls were still being placed, they were still flying all the way through here. The only difference was, instead of going to the normal path to be delivered 911 circuit, they were being delivered to 10-digit numbers. 911 is still functioning the whole time. We would term it as service degradation, because when it's going to the 10-digit number, you have lost location information. The caller doesn't have to do something different. Soon as you tell them, well, don't call 911, call this, well, as soon as 911 is behaving normally from the user perspective, at the PSAP, at the ECC, then you got to tell them, okay, now stop doing that and dial 911. So from this lesson learned, we ask agencies, please don't, unless we tell you it's hard down, please don't tell people to do something different. The system was still doing what it's supposed to do, it just couldn't be delivered over its primary path. It was going to 10-digit numbers. There was a little issue we discovered unfortunate a little bit later on with a couple of agencies. So that's the summary of this one. It was an in-progress migration, side-by-side, that broke the system there temporarily from its normal call flow. Then unfortunately, and I guess this is a good enough time to pause, for, and those have been around a while, know, this is an extraordinary unfortunate series of events too close together, because Denco has a really long track record of just uptime. So I can understand, we can understand, and it appears to be concerned, it appears on the surface, something's wrong, what's going on, so we're grateful to have the opportunity to walk through this with you. The September 8 event, so we've got, we've got this first event that's related to upgrading. This one is more, this is typical, this is what we dealt with before the microwave, frankly. Something happens in the telephone company's central office, completely out of our control, we can't do anything about it, and it introduces problems, and you have to process right. What makes this problematic, so we don't have SDWAN fully implemented, so we don't have the smart network in place that can take calls and go, ooh, bad network, I'm going to send everything this way, I'm going to send it over this network segment. We had it bouncing, which means, I'm working, I'm not working, I'm working, I'm not working, I'm working, I'm not working, and so the network's trying to figure out what to do to process calls. That was a form of network disruption. Again, call processing was happening, we rerouted, Denco rerouted to 10-digit administrative lines, and unfortunately, we were relying on Entrada to do that for us. Part of the takeaway was, we got the ability to do it ourselves, because we see it, it was kind of a training thing. We get on the phone with the guy, they execute these changes, they weren't doing them fast enough. So we felt a delay here, but that's what should have happened. Again, 911 is still operational, caller dials 911, it's still getting the 911 network, it just can't be delivered through the normal path. So again, communication with the public, we have to be careful not to tell them 911 is down, because it isn't. It just isn't delivered. The user experience in the ECC is different, but 911 is still operational. You want them to use that number, because the very moment it's restored, you don't have to tell anything. Yes, Mayor? The user experience in the ECC is different. Which user? So when I say ECC, PSAP, Emergency Communication Center, they're not getting, coming in on the 911 line, now they're getting it over here on the 10-digit line. So for them, it looks like it's broke. But the way the system's designed is, now the calls are being rerouted to this 10-digit line since there's a communication problem with the 911 equipment and its host. So you've got a kind of an application problem, and now we've taken the calls out of the application and delivered them to the... So that, at that point, that 10-digit call is simply a voice call? There is no connectivity to the dispatch software? Correct. So there's no location information, there's no whatever they can do? So we follow the service degradation, because basic 911, when it was rolled out 35 years ago, was, it was a... Just a voice call? Yeah. So it's a degradation. It's still routing, they're still dialing 911. The caller's experience... The caller's experience is the same? Yes, and that's the goal. We don't want to de-train them in a moment, we want to keep them doing what they need to do. The only thing different might be that, while I'm sure the dispatch asks them to confirm their location... All the time, yeah. They're not getting an automatic readout of location. Right, yeah. Okay. So, and obviously, that's unacceptable, we don't like that either. That's, that's not what we're here to do, so, but these things happen, unfortunately. So Frontier finally figured out what was going on, they got that fixed, and business resumed. Then we get to November 19, and we're on the other side of this bookend. This is another SDWAN project-related problem. So this middle problem would have been mitigated if SDWAN had been fully deployed at that point, because it would have just gone around that bad segment of the wire line network, it would have skipped it. But we didn't have that piece in place yet. In this case, we, this one's a little, this is still inconclusive, honestly, but what we did get from Verizon as the system integrator, from Cisco, is they identified a firmware problem in the routers. Without getting too technical, but I'm happy to, if you'd like to, there was something going on here, we believe, that was impeding the normal flow of call traffic. It happened in the morning, it happened early hours of the morning, they, our staff figured out, I say our, old habits, Denco staff figured out what needed to be done, they executed a restart, a reconnection of the services, everything worked great. Came again about three hours later, and that didn't fix it this time. So this, this service degradation starts drawing out. Ultimately, it's figured out there was some communication issues again between the host and the 911 dispatcher's terminal, their call-taking position, that was not going through this acknowledgement, this ACT thing. So with that, this whole problem draws out. They tried what, remediated the issue earlier in the day, didn't work. Ultimately, we turn off the packet duplication, which is an enhanced feature, which is normally good, but it appears it was related to this problem, the bug with the Cisco gear. Those were taken offline, didn't fix it immediately, everything was restarted after they're taken offline, normal system operation was restored, and it's been solid since. Now, the, this, the Cisco gear's been upgraded to the latest firmware, per Cisco. Additional SD sites have been stood up, meaning every, every ECC has SDWAN routers there to manage the multiple connections. So we still lack a few sites being done. It gets us close to the end of the year, it's really, really dangerous to do anything with the telephone company, because the best and the brightest have a seniority, and they can just take vacation, and they take it at the end of the month. So we really thought, this is not a good time to finish this up. So we'll be pushing the final few sites through just after the first of the year, 9th or 10th or 9th. But what we didn't have, it's like water passing under a bridge. When the water was going under the bridge at the time of this issue, there wasn't any place, anything in place capturing it, capturing what was going on in the network. Because from the benefit perspective, they saw no packet errors in the network, there was no errors in the Cisco gear, it all seemed like, for us, saying, it looks fine. Motorola makes the best of software, they call technique and software, they're like, yeah, but it's not connecting, so there's, they're left with a little bit of quandary. Network's fine, software's not talking, something's going on. Unfortunately, as water passes under a bridge, once the packets leave the network, you know, there's nothing left to look at. They did some, they did send a guy out on site, a technician, engineer on site, just digging as much as they could, they set up packet capturing to kind of see, what does the network look like? They found nothing, which is the most disconcerting part, of course, but it's like kicking your car in when it keeps doing that thing, and you take the mechanic, it doesn't do that thing. It's a little bit like that, it's how it feels. But that's what we have. We had a bookend, a development deployment problem on the front side, it's key errors essentially, on this backside. on this backside, we got a hinder error. So there's three incidents in somewhat close, well, very close proximity compared to our track record, less than six months. Two of them were deploying what would have kept the middle one from happening if it had been deployed. So it's an unfortunate series of events, but I can, you know, I can tell you from my time at the agency, and even before I arrived 20 years ago, that the commitment to delivering the best services to the citizens we both serve, obviously, we serve the whole geography of the county, and the citizens of Lewisville, this is unacceptable to us. These failures are unacceptable. They're unfortunate and unavoidable in some ways because of human error, plug encoding of firmware is a human error, but at the end of the day, the system never failed. It just wasn't delivering the calls the way we all desired it to do that. So it was going to ten-digit numbers. There were, we did discover there was a couple agencies that they weren't getting the calls to their ten-digit numbers, and they made changes to make sure they're flowing through. So for some user experiences, and I mean, in that point, I'm talking about the ECC, the PSAP, the agency, it'd be different, it looked more down to them. But the system was doing its job at that point, it was going to a number that could be reached.
And that was us, right? We were one.
So I hope you guys can find whatever the root cause was and report that to Claire when you guys know, that'll give us a little bit of comfort.
Sure, yes, sir.
Going back to July 15th, the problem, so I'm the one who found out through a news report, and it just said Denton 911 Service is down.
Yeah.
Which Denton, it didn't say Denton County, so I called someone, I called an elected official in Denton, who called me right back and said, yeah, it's down, and it's the county. Which I called our city manager, who called our police chief, who was not informed.
Yeah.
And so, I say, it seems like we got, with the other breakdowns, we got that, but I mean, we definitely, our police chief, yeah, even though it's working, not as intended, but it's working, our chief needs to be kept in the loop.
And I can address that, there's two issues there, I'd like to comment on that quick. As far as the internal communications with the chief and the ECC managers, we believe we've totally fixed that. And there was a delay in communicating in those initial service degradations. What was unfortunate is, and through no maliciousness at all, some of the agencies started tweeting and putting on social media that 911 was down. So the news media picked up on that and started reporting to the public that 911 was down. I know I got a call in my office as I was trying to work with our vendors, from a CBS 11, who said, you know, and my response was, we're not asking citizens to do anything differently, all the backup systems are in play and they're working, just dial 911 if you have an emergency. And his response was, well, that's not what your agencies are saying. So we immediately, after service was restored, went out and communicated with all of the agencies and put a decent plan together that's in writing, that's shared with everyone, and we understand if we're saying we're gonna take the lead on communication, we have an obligation to do that. So we believe that is in place now, that July 15th situation was unfortunate for everyone, and I say, nobody acted maliciously, we just, these were so rare up to that point that it just hadn't been an issue.
And you can understand, by the time it gets to us, it's probably been happening for quite a while, so that makes it doubly concerning when we start getting phone calls or when we start seeing it through other channels, so.
Yeah, and we regret that that happens, you know, and that's why we feel pretty good about having worked out a communication plan with all the agency, you know, the chiefs and the like, so that we don't spread misinformation. When things aren't working right from the ECC, the agency perspective, it is very disconcerting and it bothers us too, obviously, since we hang our hat on delivering service. But we don't want to, I'm necessarily not scared of the public to think, well, things aren't gonna work if I dial 911. So, but yeah, we appreciate your concern, you rightly should be, you're called the council of your citizens.
Councilmember Kelly could not be here tonight, but I was asked, and I believe you've got a copy of this, but I am gonna read this into the record so we have it. So Councilmember Kelly writes, and I quote, "I'm disappointed and concerned. As a longtime tech executive, I understand outages happen. I understand that what may appear to be the same problem can have different underlying causes, and I further understand that root causes can be difficult to ascertain. However, I also understand acceptable service levels correlate directly and mutably to the potential harm downtime can inflict. And there is no system where downtime has more potential for harm than our 911 service." Slide five in the deck states Denko's mission as to provide a highly advanced and efficient enhanced 911 emergency telecommunications system as the primary emergency access for citizens and visitors in the district to quickly obtain the emergency services needed to protect life, health, and property. I assert strongly that this is not your mission. The duties of Denko rise above a mission. You have an obligation, you have a responsibility, you do not have a mission. I regret I cannot attend the meeting in person, but I will be watching via livestream, and I'm hoping to see the following topics addressed during the presentation. One, pre-outages business continuity plan. Two, a new business continuity plan that incorporates lessons learned. Three, results and notes from the last three years of business continuity exercises. Four, minutes from the last one year of the risk assessment team meetings. Five, an RPO, recovery point objective. Six, an RTO, recovery time objective. Seven, SLO, service level objectives. Eight, project plan for the SD-WAN enhancement project. And nine, an independent review certification options for operations and infrastructure. From Patrick Kelly, Lewisville City Council, place six. Being a tech guy myself, you guys know, I would like to see some, a little bit more fleshed out of what we're doing moving forward, and where this SD-WAN project is, are we still in the middle of it? Obviously, we are, we have two more locations at least that I indicated, four more, okay.
We expect January 9th for it to be fully implemented.
So, yeah, and it may be that, I get it, everybody's low-staffed right now, everybody's taking vacations, and it may be that some of this information doesn't hit my mailbox or Patrick's mailbox until after that, but we would appreciate some additional communication to that note, and I know you have this letter. So I appreciate you taking that into consideration. Other questions, comments, concerns? Folks, I hate having you in here because, quite frankly, you guys are awesome and have been, and so this is, I'm sure, been very challenging for the organization. So I hope we can get back on an even keel after this SD-WAN conversion comes and we don't have to have anything but a wonderful conversation about how our uptime is the best in the nation. I appreciate you guys. All right, with that, unless there are any other comments from council, we are going to move into regular sessions starting at 7:00. We are done with workshop. Good evening. It is 7:00 PM, I'm calling this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. First up, if you would join me in invocation, and especially with this being the end of the year, and we have many faith communities that take this time of year to reflect, if you would please join me in some contemplation and thoughts on what maybe we can do to end the year to be the light in the world that we are called to be. Amen. Councilmember Green?
Please join me for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, item C, we have a presentation tonight of the 2023 Color Palooza logo and 2023 Color Palooza logo student contest winter, I'm sorry, winner, winter. I'm really looking forward to the cold weather this week. We have Denise Helbing, our Arts Center Manager, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager, thanks for having us here tonight. This year's winning Color Palooza logo contest winner is Ann J. N., and she is a senior at Hebron High School and a Castle Hills resident. Ann enjoys wood burning and drawing and animating as her art hobbies, and she also enjoys gardening and cooking. Ann plans to attend either UT Austin, I'm gonna repeat the reaction, okay, or UT Dallas after graduating this year to study computer science. Ann will be receiving a $1,000 scholarship, which is administered by the Greater Lewisville Arts Alliance as an award for winning this contest. When she was designing her logo, the phrase "burst of color" really stuck out to her, and she wanted to find a way to represent that in her design. And we believe her design exemplifies the bright blooming and colorful flowers that bloom in the spring. So without further ado, let us reveal the 2023 Color Palooza logo, so hard for me to say, yes. And it'll go on your screens. And you will see that we have a square version of the logo, and on the screens we'll have a horizontal version of the logo. And for Ann here, we have a little gift, if you want to get that out, actually.
There it is.
There it is, all right. With more bursts of color. So here, you can already see your logo on a t-shirt, how it will look. So thank you, Ann, congratulations.
Great job. I want to commend you on going ahead and bringing in a new logo, and I love how it's evolved over the years. Now we have one for social media signs, we have one for banners, I mean, it's pretty amazing. So thank you so much for the long tradition that we're starting to create here, it's awesome. City Attorney, do I need to read the public hearing and then just state that we're taking no action? Okay. Item D, public hearing. Item one, we are not taking any action on this item tonight. Item two, public hearing. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to table this to January 9th. Actually, I can just do that, right? Or do I need a motion? Okay. Counsel, I'd entertain a motion to table this until January 9th.
Go ahead.
Move to table the public hearing until January 9th.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. 2023, yes, January 20, 2023.
Yes.
Motion passes four to nothing. Item E, Visitor Citizen Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience stamping a feat, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, do we have any comment cards?
We got them.
All right, thank you. Item F, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, do we have any speaker cards for this? All right. Counsel, I would ask that someone make a motion to remove item seven.
Mayor, would you like me to make a motion to remove item seven and then approve without...
And then approve the consent agenda without seven?
Can do that in one?
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay.
We can do that in one.
All right, well, I move that we remove item seven from the consent agenda and approve items one through six and eight through 10 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes four to nothing. Item seven, we have pulled regarding the approval of the Economic Development Agreement between the City of Lewisville and Hilti Incorporated. This item, we are not taking any action on. Item 11, also relates to a tax abatement agreement that we are not taking any action on tonight. Item H, reports. Councilmember Jones, would you mind if we kicked off with you?
All right, as long as you don't forget Councilwoman Green. I just want to tell everybody, the animal shelter is doing a free mega-adoption where they're waiving all feeds for all animals. I've heard some people who, they know who they are, who are talking about getting a pet, you know, and I told them to go to the adoption center. Also, on a personal note, just want to wish everyone, all of our staff and everyone here, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, whatever you celebrate, happy holidays. And I want to thank the council for all the work that we do, and I want to take this down, I'm giving the mayor a compliment because I like to tease him, but just what outstanding job he's done and it's been great working with you this season, look forward to a prosperous 2023.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Meredith?
No report, but I'll reiterate exactly what Brandon said.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
No report.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary? Officer, thank you for being here. Anything from the development team?
No report, Mayor.
All right, good.
No report.
Everybody's sliding into home base, I get it, I get it. Where's the lake?
Last level, lake level report for the year, Lewisville Lake elevation's 519.94 feet, we're just north of 90% full.
Gotcha, outstanding. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Green?
Well, Mayor, I want to be able to, I want to drag this out a little bit so that I can say I could have done this meeting faster than you. So I did want to echo some of the comments that Mr. Jones was talking about as far as wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, all the things. I also wanted to say thank you to our fire department for bringing Santa to every neighborhood. That is, I will tell you the first time that ever happened, whenever we moved to Lewisville, we had no idea what was going on, and it really scared us at first, but when we realized what was going on, we thought, well, that is just absolutely amazing, and it's really awesome just to see the love and care that the fire department puts into that. And I think it's just, I know a lot of departments do that as well, but I just think Lewisville does it just a little bit better, and I just wanted to say thank you to the fire department for making that extra effort to do that. And then I also related to Christmas, and I've seen the sign out already for the Christmas tree recycling, so I just wanted to remind everyone, there is Christmas tree recycling after the season is over, so if you had, not the plastic ones, but if you have a real tree, you can take it out to Lake Lewisville, Lake Park, they have signs pointing you where you need to go, and they will recycle the Christmas trees for you so that your Christmas tree does not sit there waiting for the republic to pick it up, because I don't think they will. And I think there was one more thing I wanted to say. Oh, I wanted to comment about the reception we had last week for the boards and commissions, thank you, since the mayor was the only one who got to say anything, I too wanted to echo our appreciation. I think that Lewisville is very special, we have a lot of people that get involved that make it as special as it is. So I also just wanted to say thank you to everyone who gives their time to make this place better.
City Manager? All right. Well, now, now I know we're not getting out early. Wanted to also congratulate the police department on their great toy drive this year, and of course, that was all the throwdown with all the other departments and whatnot, which I thought was spectacular. I want to remind everybody that we have a 72-hour freeze, hard freeze, coming up this week, so please check on your neighbors, please winterize anything that needs to be winterized, especially keep those water taps dripping just a little bit. I will tell you that one of the greatest losses of water last couple of years has been from busted pipes in people's residences, so if you can be a little proactive over the next couple of days, that'd be outstanding. I do want to also remind folks, as I was riding out with the fire department, this year, I, for some reason, as I was riding out with Santa, a lot of my time was spent on calls. Doesn't always happen that way, but there's some pretty, people are having a hard time. Doesn't always happen that way, but there's some pretty, people are having a hard time, you know, we're not, not everybody's having the greatest of holidays, and our police and our fire, our dispatchers, they see that on a day-to-day basis, so, you know, show a little extra kindness. I know it's been hard the last year or so trying to get back into being normal, but let's just try and show a little extra kindness and look out for our neighbors over the next couple of weeks, and I think that'd be a great way to kick off 2023. I also would love to thank the city staff and, of course, my council up here for allowing me to do what I do. It's pretty awesome, and so you guys are great, it's a wonderful team up here. I'm not going to say anything about other municipalities, other than ours is pretty awesome. So thank you all for pitching in and making the community great. With that, I'm going to move us into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and Session 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We will adjourn into closed session. One, two, we're back. All right, as there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, I call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council adjourned. Merry Christmas, y'all.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.